Yeah.
It's a different time zone when you're on the east side of it.
Which town like is really European looking?
Quebec.
It is Quebec, yeah. I want to go there.
For meeting order, please rise. And I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Brennan. Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman McGovern. Alderman Clifford.
Present.
All right, before we do consent agenda, I'd like to welcome Dan Brennan as our newest alderman for the Mr. Violet who left and Dan's been a longtime resident of Palis Heights and I think I think he'll be a great addition to our group here and local individual has been backed up in a lot of things and actually owned a business in town for a while too, so.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, thank you. I apologize if I'm a little show off today, I just got off the boat about two hours ago, so I'm sorry. All right, under the consent calendar, the approval of minutes from the city council meeting of September 17th, 2024, and also approval of a payroll and a voucher list for the ending, period ending, September 27th, 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
All right, any seal bits tonight?
No bits.
None that I'm aware of, okay. Under my report, just a couple of things, this Saturday we have a electronic waste disposal over at the Metro lot at 119th and Southwest Highway there, run by Republic, and that'll be from eight o'clock in the morning till 11:30. Any electronic waste you may have, you can bring there, old TV sets, monitors and the like. It is for residents, so you will have to have proof of residency. And just an update, our next meeting will be the annual mayor for a day. I know you're excited about this. This is, women's club has been doing this for geez forty some years now and so this will be, we'll have the mock meeting before our normal meeting. Over to Lee Catherine and have a little presentation over there as we do every year, but so that's two weeks from tonight, so just keep that in mind. That being said, what I need is a motion to approve the reappointment of David, or I'm sorry, Daniel Liston to the police pension board for a two-year period extending, expiring October 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last week I had a liquor hearing as liquor commissioner and we had the people from Orange's Pancake House came in looking for a liquor license and very nice pancake house, have you been over there on Southwest Highway? Your main business, you're looking to kind of build up your mimosi business, is that my understanding is? So they're not going to change the hours or anything like that, but as of right now, so that'll be the main thrust of what they're trying to do. So that being said, I'm looking for a request to adopt the ordinance increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses by one and that'll be going to the Orange's Pancake House located at 11845 Southwest Highway.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Hi.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Check with us tomorrow morning with Ashley and we'll get that over to you so you can get to your, you have to go file for your state liquor license. Okay, you're all set, good luck.
Cheers.
I don't drink, so. All right, that's all I have tonight, the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the only report I have is that if you would like to, residents here would like to register at City Hall by our deputy city clerk, Ashley Powell, the deadline to do so is October 8th here at City Hall. There's other ways that you can register, but if you would like to register here, the deadline is October 8th. Thank you.
All right, city treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting caught up here, I have the treasurer's report for the month ending August 31st. General fund began the month with five million eight hundred and twenty-six, I'm sorry, began the month with five million eight hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Revenues from the general fund are one million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Expenses from the general fund were one million one hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Other source use, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of six million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand sixty-seven dollars. Total of all city funds began August with thirty-one million six hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-six. Revenues totaled three million one hundred and seventy-one thousand three fifty-one. Expenses for the month were two million fifty-nine thousand two hundred and six dollars, other source use two hundred and four thousand two thirty-seven, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of thirty-two million six hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, another case, a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Clifford, is that, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, city attorney?
Well, I see I'm on there twice, so I have no report, no report.
Good job. All right, any communications, anyone have tonight?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have two so far. Like to congratulate, you may have seen it in some of the local papers or online, District 118 was named a Blue Ribbon Award recipient. It's like one of the few times since the district has received that award, it's a great award for an education. Those people that run the school districts should be congratulated. Not to be outdone, within a day or two, they came out with the high school awards and I think all the palaces are fortunate as well as some of the other communities. District 230 was named in the top 25 of the high school districts in Illinois. And those are two, I think, really good awards and actually, as we all know, that helps the city tremendously, especially when people are looking to move into their, with their kids to the school district. That's the end of that report.
Excellent selling point. All right, any other communications? Citizens wishing to address the council, anyone have anything? Yes, Brian, name and address, Brian?
I'm Brian Bone, I live at 12223 Richard Avenue. We had some hail damage earlier in the year and it seems like the permits are taking forever. I don't know if it's a matter of getting an inspector out there inspecting the roofs before you get the permits, but the rate we're going now, it's going to be snowfall and we're still going to be waiting for permits to get the roofs done. I was just wondering if there's some kind of urgency that we could put an emergency order in to help these people out in the building department to try to get all this work done.
Well, we've, just so you know, we've had, through this hail damage we've had, we've probably had three to four times the normal amount of permits we normally process, but we Right. We have inspectors working, in some cases weekends, but then we just added some more staff about two weeks ago just to get them moving along, so.
Yeah, I mean, I put in for a permit August 20th and I'm still waiting to get the permit.
Okay.
And, you know, if, if a regular business did business the way we're handing out these permits, they would be out of business because, you know, people are expecting stuff nowadays, seven to 10 days to get a response. I go over to the building department, they can't even find my paperwork, they can't go through their log of handwritten to find it and then the computer, they can't find it on the computer either. So I said, I told them, I said, I'm not leaving until you find a piece of paper. And eventually, about 20 minutes later, you filed on the 20th, you know, it's going to be a while. But, I mean, these people are going to be waiting to try to get their houses done before, you know, the weather changes.
You know, we're cognizant and we have added some people as I said since then, so.
Yeah.
I'll have someone take a look at it tomorrow.
Yeah.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm the chairman of the Licensed Permits and Franchises Committee, we've had through August eight hundred and fifty-nine permits issued, that was more than we did all of last year, so there was this generational storm that came through and it's all hail damage, it's all roofs. But we have a code that the building inspector has to stick by for inspection, ice and water shield to protect the residents. As Mayor said, we've added staff to try and help with this, but they were just overwhelmed by our department of four people to process all these permits this year because of that one hailstorm.
I mean, if they're looking for volunteers, I'll volunteer to help out.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, on that topic, and I just mentioned it briefly to the mayor and our city attorney and Alderman Clifford earlier today. You may have seen, like, on Sunday night in between football games at 60 minutes, they had a, I think it might have been a rerun actually, but they're talking about some of the insurance companies that are giving people a tremendously hard time around the country. Most of this had to do with the earlier hurricane, not the one that just devastated the south in North Carolina and other states. So it was not a favorable thing that insurance companies are doing to residents across the country. And along those lines, it's come to my attention that, and if we don't have this, I think we're going to try to propose it at Alderman Lewandowski's committee, to add in, if it's legal, because some insurance companies are telling residents that if you have in your code a, an ordinance that says that they have to return things to the original condition prior to, like, whatever, if it was a hail or wind or whatever, damage. If you don't have it, they don't have to cover that. As an example, I know this for a fact, like, in my own house, I have hail damage and once, one or two sides of my home have significant damage, they thought one side had enough and they said, we'll repaint one side of the house and they give you a couple hundred dollars, six hundred dollars. It cost me five thousand dollars to get the house painted, because you're not going to have one part of your house painted new and the other houses, the other part of your home is like five or 10 years painted. And so what the insurance company told me is, if your city had that wording in their ordinances, you know, then we would have covered and wrapped it all the way around. So, but then it gets into, which our city attorney just mentioned, he said, if you're not a home rule, you might not be able to do that. So I'm just saying, if we could check into that, it might help our residents for the next time. And also, I would encourage everybody to read the fine print on your homeowner's policies.
Yeah.
You know, you're not the only one, Orland Park, I talked to some people there, they were like, at one time, almost four months behind.
Yeah.
I don't know what they caught up to, at one time we were over three and we've caught up probably by half, at least that, four to five weeks out now, with a lot of it. Part of it, we do have a new girl there, she's getting acclimated to the system they do. But I think that maybe in the future it should look like automating the system, thereby computer dependent paper on some of those things and be able to cross check, because what you do, ask for a permit, you have to give a specific address. It should be able to be cross checked by name, address, account number, or they could just go on a computer and check off, say, here it is, that would eliminate your 20 minute wait, but it's coming, believe us, and hopefully it'll get to you before the weather seriously changes.
Another thing to keep in mind too, that I'm hearing from some of the HOAs is that when they, when you get a quote from the company to fix it, it's only good for so long. And, you know, when we get to the four month thing, you know, then all of a sudden, you know, the quote goes up. And so, you know, I, just so you know, because you and I were in a meeting last week together and you were talking about this, I had a list of residents that were wondering where theirs were, I added your name to it. So the building department this week is, you know, trying to find out where you are on the line.
Yeah, I mentioned to them that I had talked to you.
Yeah.
And so, they said they haven't heard from you yet.
Most of that, my insurance company told me, and I checked with a couple, is that anywhere from 180, mine in particular is 365 days of date of claim, which at this particular thing, on or about May 7th, so I'm good to about, just about May 7th or the next month after. Three, that's with a certain company, I won't mention names, but they said 365, I would check with your company and see what the limit and the claim would do to work. As far as the other work goes, if they find extra work, that's where your contractor is going to come in and resubmit to cover that through your insurance, if they'll cover it. Some of the things are, in my particular, I'm still waiting on an issue of deciding, like Alderman McGrogan said, there's holes in the vinyl siding, but hail came from the west side, so it's all the west side of my house. They said, no, we're only going to probably place the one side, if we place it at all, by state ordinance requires that. So that relates back there, there's some state ordinance in there that, what the insurance companies follow. So I'm still waiting on that one and the skylights is another one. Any skylight over six to eight years old, some of those flashing kits are no longer made, so there's about replacing the skylights. They can't give you a flashing kit because it doesn't fit the skylight, so therefore you got to replace the skylight. Some of them are getting denied too and others are getting approved, so it all comes down to your insurance company and that.
I know my neighbor across the street has aluminum siding, well, they don't make aluminum siding anymore, so he's got to get the whole house done, you know.
Well.
They're only going to cover.
I got bundle and brick, but they do may still make aluminum siding to a point, my neighbor's just having it installed at her house right next door, is watching today. But anyway, we're moving along, we're trying to do better.
Brian, your points will take it, we realize his points, we hired some people, we're going to try to make it faster.
Okay.
And just the fact that other towns are taking longer is not an excuse, we should be more diligent, and we are moving in that direction.
Right.
But we also want to take caution because as Alderman Lewandowski said, there's some inspections and such that have to be made by state law and stuff before they can replace some of the stuff, so. It's a little bit more labor intensive just giving a building permit, but that's, that's the name of the game, but we'll follow up on it.
Yeah, sure.
Well, if they need any volunteers, I'm all volunteer.
Okay, I know that, I know that for a fact. All right, any other citizens?
Harlan Y. Voda, 7640 West 135th Street. Mr. Brennan, I want to be one of the first citizens to welcome you. Very pleased to see a very nice person such as yourself to be one of our aldermen. I'm very happy that you were, the mayor chose you. So for some of you aldermen don't know that Mr. Brennan allowed me and my son to film for Channel 4 many years ago, a baseball game at his professional semi-pro baseball team. And it was a memory for me that me and my kid will remember forever, because how often you get to sit in the press box and film, film a semi-pro baseball game. Anyways, you're going to see me here at a lot of meetings, you're going to hear some good things about me, you're going to hear some bad things about me. So I just wanted to try to start it off and let you know why I am coming to city council meetings. I brought you some reading material for your bathroom, it even comes with colored pictures. And I brought you, do not impede my water shirt. All right, so it all started many years ago, Mr. Brennan, Alderman Brennan. I allowed the city of Palis Heights to put sewer and water through my property and since the city of Palis Heights was not going to charge me for the sewer and water, I was willing to give them an easement to go through my front yard for 200 feet to bring sewer and water to the houses to the east of me. I did not charge the city anything for this particular easement. The city in return was to replace the city berm that was built on my property. The city berm worked like a charm until low and behold, my next door neighbor, Mr. Impuma, subdivided his property and a new home was built to the east of me. The city allowed the builder to raise the property two feet. So all the water that used to drain to the east of my property stops at that property line. I complained to the city, to the building department, and I complained to everybody. And you're going to see all the emails in your reading material there, if you choose to read any of it, you will see copies of all the emails. The city of Palis Heights, you'll see a copy of an email from Adam Jazinski, which specifically states the city of Palis Heights is the cause of my drainage problems. Their email is there, I got it through a Freedom of Information request. I will also let you know that if I send you an email, I will tell you already ahead of time, you're not allowed to respond to me. Through orders of the attorney, you're not allowed to contact me regarding anything in terms of my yard flooding. Why it's that way, I don't know. Maybe because I outsmarted him, got the Freedom of Information request and got copies of all their emails, but anyways. So we've been fighting with the city for years. And we told them our trees are going to die, our bushes are going to die, and my yard is flooding. Well, low and behold, my trees died, I had to have four trees taken down, a cost of thousands of dollars. I took it upon myself because I couldn't get the city to help me to put, to hire a contractor to put a drainage ditch tile in my yard to get the water from my backyard up to the county clerk. The mayor was nice enough, and I thank you, Mayor, to help me with the county to get larger culverts installed, which now that my drain tile goes to the larger culverts, at least my draining problems have ceased. Okay, so I do no longer have drainage problems, but I was out seven thousand, close to eight thousand dollars that I spent out of my pocket when I shouldn't have done it. You can see, you will see in that, your reading material, you will see an email from the city's engineer. The city's engineer requested for the homeowner in that particular property or the builder of that property to modify his grades to a certain level so my water can drain. And the city never required him to do it, but yet the city submitted a false water drainage map saying that he did do it. I filed the complaint with the Illinois Attorney General's Office and the Illinois Attorney General's Office unfortunately said, referred, you'll see a copy of that as well, referred it back to the city of Palis Heights for them to resolve it. I have never heard from the city of Palis Heights to resolve that issue. The only person who's had, has stepped up a little bit for me has been Mr. Alderman Bassow. Mr. Bassow said, if everything that I'm saying is true, why don't the city somehow reimburse me for all the expenditures that I mount? Well, you will see that everything that I'm saying is true. Problem is, I need somebody to make a motion and I need somebody to second that motion, to have the city attorney to negotiate an easement agreement for part of my property that is not, does not have a city easement. I've talked to the police commissioner, I told the police commissioner, if there is a leak on my property because it doesn't serve my house, that I do not want the city of Palis Heights on my property that is trespassing, I would want them to be removed. And I said, because they need to negotiate an easement agreement because they can't jump over part of the property that doesn't have an easement agreement to get onto the property to fix it. So he said, well, that's not right, I said, no, it's not right, but it's not right what the city of Palis Heights has done to me. And so, welcome to Palis Heights and I'm sorry that I had to present you with all of this, but I've tried so many different things, I've tried being mean, I've tried being nice, I've tried being quiet. None of them have worked. I thought that I had something resolved, my alderman, we had a discussion, we were, it seemed like everything was going to go good and then low and behold, we didn't agree on political views, haven't heard from my alderman since. So it's just, it's just a sad day, I love the city of Palis Heights, I love the mayor, I love all you aldermen, but I've been wronged and I just would love to see it get corrected, so, welcome.
Any other citizens? Great. Standing committees, finance committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Mr. Mayor, we have number 11 on the agenda and there'll be some modifications. First, this is a motion to approve the development agreement between the city of Palis Heights and M. Daher LLC on Tiffany Square. Which is on the northwest corner of College Drive in Harlem called Tiffany Square.
You're making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Key, discussion?
Discussion. Mr. Mayor, each of the aldermen has before them another insert which we'd like to include as page 15 in the agreement. This is based on, it's more form over substance, but you can read it and it doesn't, it's more, it covers like Employment Acts and other, you know, where the steal's coming from and things of that nature. That's one thing. Also, I was reading this agreement and I would like to also make, recommend that we consider making two other changes under, on page 10, under item 14, there was wording, and I'll just read it. We would grant, granted city water and utility easement along the south edge of the property along College Drive for access and maintenance of the city water main, the utility easement. Developer and city shall cooperate to secure city easement. I think we should further, we should add the words, further, the developer shall not impede such action. You know, or something along those lines, I mean, we have attorneys, but I think that there's something that needed so that everybody, because the word right now cooperate, that's kind of vague, I think, and we have a city attorney here, I think maybe he'd come up with a better word, but just that they wouldn't stop us from trying to get that easement in any way. I was thinking, you know, the further, the developer shall not impede such action, I think that says it.
Interfere.
You know, I think so, that was one thing. And then, two down from that is number 16. It gets into like how we have to try to get CIBC and Starbucks to consent to some of the easement. And then it said basically, if that's not possible, then the city's going to actually have to pay to get that work done anyhow. And it says basically that the city and the developer will share 50/50 on the expense. I think that that expense should be exclusive and I think that we should add another sentence that if this occurs, that expense will not be included in an expense item in the $700,000 note. You with me? You know, so it'll be, because the note is for other things that we've already identified and we didn't identify that as an expense, so I think we should make sure that that is, that wording is excluded. And so I'd like to recommend those changes for page 15 along with the other two changes.
So you're making a motion with those changes then?
I'll make a motion.
Any other questions?
Is there anything in, in the amount of, and since this has been a redevelopment thing, on the amount of retail, substantial retail to be in the mall there, have you made any plans to get any retail or added retail into your development?
The ownership's right here.
Yes, yes, we have.
You know, as far as part of the plan, there's X amount of non-retail and then retail and most of our position is try to get as much retail, which provides retail sales tax, which also helps you in repaying the city gratuity we're helping you out with, but I was just wondering, could you explain any of your retail plans over there or anything, do you have anything?
We have two vacancies right now and we have them listed on MLS and on LoopNet and we're getting inquiries from, you know, different businesses, different. and we're getting inquiries from, you know, different businesses, different ideas. We've heard from a place that was interested in selling nuts, like gourmet kind of nuts, that would be a retail shop. We've gotten inquiries from other businesses as well with different ideas that we're kind of considering. There's a lot of interest, you know, and we're hoping that once we're done with the project that we'll have even more interest. But yeah, we're definitely advertising it, marketing it, and trying to get retail in there.
And you're redoing the parking lot over there now as part of the agreement?
Yeah, we just poured the...
We just poured the concrete. The asphalt's next.
Okay. Are you, remember the discussion about lighting the entrance ways?
We're working on that too.
You're working on that?
It's pretty lit right now, so...
It's what?
It's pretty lit up right now, so...
Right by the street I was talking about.
We've already taken out the trees. If you pass by, you'll see.
There'll be more light in there.
Yeah, they're making it a little more viable, a little safety there, and just come up on turn. That was a concern brought up today.
Yes.
Yeah, we remember. We have plans. There's going to be two new, I think, two new lights there.
There's going to be actually, instead of a light, I want to put a small sign that lights up that says Tiffany Square, so people will drive in.
At the drive-in?
Yeah, and I think that will look better.
All right.
I like that modern look.
You'll bring that sign in for approval before you put it in, correct?
It's already, we've already had our sign people. We've already have some of the new signs up already.
All right. Just a few questions on that business plan part of it, because we all try to get as much retail in there as helps us pay the bills too, the retail side.
Any other questions, anyone who would have?
I have a quick question, very, very short. We have a Recreation Advisory Committee, and they are always asking if we can put more bike racks in. Now, this is not part of this particular agreement tonight, but in the Starbucks area, when you guys do put the new pavement in, I don't know if there's any opportunity to put any bike racks in a very safe place. If there's not, that's understandable, but I thought I voiced that on their behalf while we're here today.
We can look into it once we're done.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really congested at night. It's a very busy shopping center, especially with the gyms there and people after work, they're there.
Yeah, I would say safety would be the first priority, but just thought I...
Maybe we can figure a spot out, you know, for them. I think more towards maybe the other side.
By the chiropractic side or the other side?
Yeah, maybe neither.
But however, keep in mind, that's not their property.
Right.
Those, those, Starbucks and the chiropractor, it's not part of it.
It's not part of their, yeah.
We have some of the parking by the Starbucks.
And they have some of the parking area, yeah. That's actually being repaved in that area.
Everything that we own is being repaved.
Yeah, and I saw the curbs look great, so congratulations.
Yes, curbs, new plants. It's going to look really nice.
Any others?
I actually have a final order question. Are we voting on what we have in front of us with this amendment? Are we adding in Chairman McGrogan's?
With just, with those additions, yes.
That we don't have in front of us yet, but we're with Legals.
Authority?
Yes.
A motion to approve the agreement with those particular changes.
Right. We're not going to see the particular change, but subject to your recommendation to capture the spirit of what the chairman is saying.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I just wanted...
Any other questions? Roca?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, public safety. Alderman Bassel?
Oh, yes, Mayor. I have two items on the agenda this evening. Item number 12, motion to adopt an ordinance declaring the following vehicle a surplus and a sale to the Crosswood Police Department. A 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe VIN number 1GNLC2KC7FRSS557393.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Alderman Bassel, second by Alderman Begley, discussion?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Item number 13, motion to approve payment of Curie Motors Fleet for three 2024 Chevrolet Tahos in the amount of $175,383. These are vehicles that the department has been waiting over a year for. They're in such high demand by the municipalities that they've just come through, and the payment for these vehicles will be from drug asset forfeiture.
My understanding and talking to other people in town, different towns, this has become a very rough thing as far as getting bike vehicles. I mean, they're actually stealing from each other, I should say.
Well, we better get them in quick because on the news, they just said that if the strike is persistent, which is, you know, going on, as of today, it said one of the main things that's going to be tied up are, besides TVs, are cars.
So, it's moved by Alderman Bassel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Any discussion? Roca, please.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
And finally, Mayor, I'd like to discuss an item of public safety for all of our residents. Seeing that I can't do that with my newspaper, do you mind if I read a few lines?
You can read whatever you like.
Thank you. And this was in the Tribune the other day, article on Chicago Tribune, and it just coincidentally coincides with what we were speaking, point we were speaking to at the Public Safety Committee this past week, and that's again about scams. And a couple, for instances, of things I've heard on TV recently. Consumer fraud cost Americans a record $10 billion last year, according to the Federal Trade Commission, and the losses are climbing sharply. Artificial intelligence and other new technology make it much more difficult for even diehard skeptics to protect themselves from misleading robocalls, emails, and text messages. Church members might get fake emails from their pastors directing them to buy gift cards. If you date online, beware of romance scams. If you're looking for a job, yes, scammers target that also. If someone claiming to be a government official, bank representative, or police official reaches out to you unexpectedly, it could be an imposter. And as art imitates life or life imitates art, one of our own residents was scammed of $140,000 by someone calling and pretending to be our police chief. So, it hits right home every day. Imposter scams where criminals pretend to be someone noteworthy are the fastest-growing category of consumer fraud, according to the FTC. An email has replaced text and phone messages as the most frequently reported contact method. The best we can do is educate ourselves about the many new types of scams afoot, recognize that all of us are likely to be targeted at one time or another, spread the word to friends and relatives, and may not be as vigilant as you, and report any fraud attempts that you come across. Even very smart people are getting ensnared in scams. And again, I think I mentioned at every, every meeting, nobody is too educated, nobody's too intelligent, nobody's too street smart to not be subject to one scam or another in their lifetime. We mentioned at the meeting that of all the things we do in the city to make people aware of these scams, it may not be enough, and we welcome any recommendations on how we can further educate our contact and make our residents alert to these scams. We have a website, we have a newspaper, we have all sorts of bulletins, and we have these meetings that are open to the public and also televised. But there has to be more, better, and inclusive ways to educate our friends and family members that may be a little more isolated than we are. And no matter how many times we repeat these stories, we have to enforce and enforce and enforce the message. So, one thing I found is very convenient is to have caller ID on your telephone. If you, if that's an option that you have to pay for, it'd be worth a couple dollars a month to do that, because if you don't recognize the number that comes across your telephone, then you don't have to answer it. If it's an important message, it's some number that might not be in your phone, they will call back or they will leave a message on your machine. Scammers don't leave messages on your machine. So, that's one simple thing and one pretty inexpensive thing I think we can all do to protect ourselves and our family members. If you have an elderly parent or friend or neighbor that's home alone, just take a visit and mention these things to them, because as much as I would like to believe that everybody in Palis Heights is watching this broadcast, that's probably been not the case, but you could certainly knock on the door of your neighbor and spread the word. So, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment. In the newsletter that just went out from Palis Heights, the police department hitchhiked on, like, your, some of your comments, and what interesting that you brought it up. One of the things that I read the newsletter that I thought was very interesting is the scammers have figured out a way that on caller ID, that they can, they can lie on the caller ID. So, it can say like it's the Palis Heights Police Department or whoever, and so that's, I mean, they're getting so creative, and they, it's in the newsletter, they kind of warn you to watch out, don't believe everything you see, even on the caller ID. That's all I got to say.
All right. Alderman Begley?
Thanks, Mayor. It is October 1st. We are entering fall, so I just have a couple of quick announcements within that regard. The Public Arts Commission is hosting an event on October 30th, and that is going to be at the Art Garden from 6:00 to 8:00. And I'll be honest, I was a little confused at the last meeting. I think I thought you brought a pumpkin to do like a craft, and that's not what you do. You decorate your pumpkin at home, you bring it to the Art Garden, and then they're going to give you tea lights, and it'll be all cute. So, that's, that's the plan there on October 30th. And then I just wanted to commend Ashley, Katie, and Steve Rhodes from the city. They did a really nice job decorating the gazebo out there, and it's kind of like a little, nice little fall setting out there. It's very Gilmore Girls, as I've heard people describe it. And next, I have a motion to approve...
Hallmark station.
Yes, yes, it's very sweet. So, I have a motion to approve a proposal from McKay Hill Painting Company to clean, prep, and paint at the Palis Heights Metro Station in the amount of $18,965. And I'll just make a note that that's really kind of to clean up graffiti and things like that, we're not painting the actual building.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Clifford. Clifford, discussion? Roca?
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Next, I have a motion to approve payment to Thermopol Mechanical Inc. for the HVAC replacement system in the Public Works Garage in the amount of $19,600.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roca?
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
And finally, I have a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the Cal Sag Trail at Lake Catherine Phase Three Project in the amount of $31,380.90.
Moved by Alderman Begley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Roca?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Planning, zoning, Alderman McGovern's not here, I don't think he's got anything tonight. Recreation, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right, fine, sir. Roads and construction, Alderman Clifford?
No real report, except we're just finishing up on the road program. There's a couple mishaps on stone on the side of road, which is being rectified with the contractor and cleaned up, and we'll be addressing some bike path issues, filling in with some paving there. We'll be discussing that at Roads and Construction next meeting. Other than that, we're just wrapping up everything for, on the roads and things of that nature.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Last and foremost, franchise, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report.
Nothing?
Okay. Sorry.
Alderman Brennan, you've got a whole bunch of stuff there.
Got some money. Got some motions. Like, motion to approve the extension of the water meter replacement program with Calumet City Plumbing to cover the labor and installation of approximately 4,500 meters in the amount of $711,000, with 5% of contingency not to exceed the total contract amount of $746,550.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman, I'm glad to say that, Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Begley. Discussion? Roca?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve payment to Aries Incorporated for the emergency work done on the 15-inch sanitary sewer at 13101 Southwest Highway and 131st in the amount of $68,927.31.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roca?
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve a proposal from the Cahill Painting Company to power wash the exterior walls on the hospital pump station reservoir and Route 83 pump station concrete water tanks in the amount of $16,150.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roca?
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve engineering construction oversight for the Misty Meadow Tank Painting with Dixon Engineering in the amount of $57,650.
Moved by Alderman Brennan.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. I mean, who is it? McGrogan? Okay. Discussion? Roca?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
I'd like to make another motion to approve a proposal with Flow Techniques Incorporated to install a Sulzer Model XFO-100E 4-inch 10-horsepower 230-volt pump to convert to